It's seven, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the Town of Batavia Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, January eighteenth. Roll call, please, Kim.
Paul Marquesi.
Here.
Paul McCullough.
Here.
Don Partridge.
Here.
Jonathan Long.
Here.
Steve Tanner.
Here.
Brooks Hawley. Brittany.
Here.
Jennifer.
Here.
Kath, you're set.
Yes. Okay, we have one, uh, one regular member called me. Brooks isn't feeling good, so, uh, well, we'll start with Brittany this week to, to fill in. So you, you would be work, uh, you would not only be participating, you would be voting. And Jennifer, you would be participating but not voting. We'll try to alternate you, okay? Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes way back from November sixteenth?
So.
A motion by John.
Second.
Second. Second by Steve. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Does anyone have any comments on agenda items? Is there anyone from the public? I don't think so. Okay.
In the back, sir?
Anyone?
Okay, I'd first like to, to, uh, introduce the new members and welcome them. Jennifer Zambito, Jen, would, if you would, just like to give a little summary of why you wanted to be on the Planning Board? And how much you're looking forward to working with us?
Well, I heard it's the most fun board, so I decided that I, um, I really wanted to be on it because I've been on the ZBA and, um, I really find it interesting and I, I think, you know, it's a great next step for me just to be involved, um, with it. And I, um, I'm excited to learn more and to work with, um, a dedicated group of people.
Good, thank you. We look forward to it. And Brittany Whitcock?
So I've served on the zoning board for about eleven years, um, and I love the zoning board, it's a great group of people. But I feel like the Planning Board gets to see a lot more of the projects coming into the town and know a little bit more about people that are interested in being here and how we can grow our town and not only provide new business opportunities, but provide new places for people to work. So I thought this would be a good fit for me. And I have already worked with this board previously as their secretary, so I kinda knew a little bit about it, but it'll be nice to be a member.
Good, we welcome you. Now, most everybody knows what the, what the ground rules are here. Uh, I just will go over them quickly. You will get your agenda the Friday before the meeting. Uh, I'm available all weekend if you have any questions. And I ask that you call me if you aren't going to make the meeting, just so we can be prepared to have, to have coverage. Um, does anybody have any questions or any, uh, new ideas for, for the operation of our, of our board? Well, I guess you like it. Okay, okay, the next, the next thing on our agenda is a discussion on a proposed new solar law for the Town of Batavia. Now, we were fortunate to have several members here on the committee, so we'd like you to tell us a little bit about what you've been doing and see if we have any recommendations. I attended the, uh, the review you had and I was surprised at how much you did. I thought it was a really, really good job. And, uh, I had a couple of thoughts, but I'd like to get the whole group's thoughts. And we have, uh, Steve Mountain and Dan Lang here and Sharon White that can, can jump in and help us out. So is there anybody here that would like to start, uh, just a little bit about why you did it and, uh, how you've come this far?
Well, I thought.
And Don Partridge.
Thought it was important to have, uh, agricultural input to it, to make sure that, uh, since it's farmland, it's gonna see the bulk of it. And, uh, I just, and obviously, you know, I, I'm into it big time. So I wanted to make sure that that, uh, fit the way we wanted it to fit. So, um, I was, I know we had a halfway, you know, this town had a half, was way ahead of the curve on having the policy we had. And to refine it, uh, I just, you know, it's obviously time to do it. I thought, uh, we got a pretty decent piece of, uh, stuff to work with our, uh, agenda, so.
Thank you, and thank you for serving. Now, Paul, you're on the committee.
Yeah, after watching several solar farms go up into town, come through the Planning Board, it's, I wanted to make sure that it was documented and codified of what can and cannot happen, where it can happen. Um, make it very clear to any developer coming in as, as to, here's the rules. If you can abide by the rules, we can listen to you. There's no, uh, guesswork in it. There's no, um, no room for, I, I shouldn't say no room, but very little interpretation as to what can and cannot happen and, and placement of it. Um, the biggest thing that I'm kinda glad of, and Brittany can talk more on it, is the setback rules and everything. Getting those to the point where it, um, benefits the non-participating properties. So it's not right on their property line or within a couple of feet. So, and Brittany has kinda spearheaded that part, which I'm grateful for.
Go ahead, Brittany.
So I would say, first of all, thank you to Drew from Wendell, who is just a, a true wealth of knowledge for the entire Solar Committee. We had a lot of people that, um, really helped with this a lot, you know, including a lot of people from the town. But the main thing that Drew pointed out is solar grew here so fast that really, nobody was as prepared for it as, you know, we had hoped to be. I don't think anybody could have anticipated the growth. And he was definitely right in saying that if your law or whatever rule, the regulations you had on file were this old, you're, you're always going to be revisiting. But the intent with this new law is to put in enough important documentation and, you know, enough, I don't wanna say regulations, but a way that people can bring in larger farms as well, solar farms, but also limit where we're putting them, who we're affecting, giving consideration to other property owners. And the public did point out at the last meeting that they definitely wanted us to look again at our setback requirements. And we did agree to do that. Uh, we don't have that information yet, um, 'cause they asked us to look at several different ones. But the whole committee was definitely willing to do that. So we definitely are looking at it from a town perspective, but we also wanna be considerate to, um, people who do wanna put in a solar farm and also their neighbors.
Thank you. Steve, you're on the committee?
I sorta was on the committee. I, I had a lot of commitments that I, you know, was only able to go to a couple of the meetings. Um, went to one of the more important meetings, at least what I thought was pretty important, 'cause we, you know, kinda went through it and finalized some of the code that we were looking at. And I think you're exactly right, Brittany, is that it really, it's a roadmap for developers and the rules are pretty straightforward is, this is what we want, this is what we require. And so, you know, someone that was going into it before, we put a lot of special conditions on approval, which everybody agreed to. But as a developer, it's always nice to know what those special, you know, requirements are beforehand. So now in, in the code is going to be requirements for landscaping and screening and setbacks, fencing, um, size. Um, and so it's, it's, it's not guesswork anymore. It's, it's pretty, there's only a few things that can be modified a little bit so that, um, it's right, and you're exactly right too, Brittany, is that, um, the gentleman from Wendell, you know, pointed out that if your code's more than three years old, it's antique when it comes to the solar code, because it changes that quickly. And, um, kudos to the town for being one of the first towns to allow it. Um, but being one of the first towns to allow it, it was also, it, we developed really quickly, which is, you know, the town board wisely chose to morat, put a moratorium until this committee could take a look at it. And I, I think that what was put out, um, at least provides that framework for, and a roadmap for developers that want to put, uh, these developments on, on the properties, um, so that it's known upfront. It's not something that they have to, you know, react to. It's something that is already in there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, uh, Dan or Steve, do you have anything to add to this?
Um, I really don't. Uh, other than, obviously, you've, you've mentioned Drew from Wendell's been a great asset. Uh, Ian Latimer with my side that we worked with, Chad Zambito, who was the chair. Um, he's obviously been, we've been going back and forth with emails, taking everyone's ideas and concepts. We've got a really good diverse board, um, for the solar board, as in some of those are, and I'll say, we're all pro-solar in the Town of Batavia. But some of the members on the board might have a different vision or a different view. So throughout all of our meetings, it was really nice to have cross-points and to have the open discussion, open arguments, more or less, back and forth until we can hash out what the real vision is for the Town of Batavia. Um, during our last meeting, we had, I don't know how many, how many members of the, the public or residents here in the Town of Batavia. We've had, um, residents from other towns also come out to some of the meetings and have some input. Um, I'm looking forward to moving it forward. We, like, like we said, we're looking at, uh, changing some of the setbacks. And I think it's a realistic vision to change some of the setbacks when you actually look at what they were, proposed, to what they would be down to. Um, and still keep it out of the roadway. And I'll say out of the roadway as in two hundred feet off of the roadway instead of the fifty feet off of the roadway. Um, there's a few things I have to discuss with engineering and Steve. He brought up a few points of some of the areas they should not be in, still plant business development, um, which is something that I myself, and we just overlooked it, so it's good to have another set of eyes on that as well. And, uh, some, a few questions with the attorney I'm gonna be meeting with tomorrow. Um, from there, I think we're, we're close to moving it along to the next step. Beginning, uh, finalizing the draft so everybody can review it and make comments, get into the county, complete the seeker and, uh, get things moving along so we can do solar again.
Is there a meeting tomorrow?
No, uh, there's a meeting as of an hour and a half ago with me and Kevin Earl tomorrow, 'cause he's got a lot of questions on the solar law. So I will, uh, be as prepared as I can be to answer his question.
Well, when I, when I came to the review, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, I was so excited. I thought, wow, two hundred feet back, that's gonna be good. Because I really didn't, don't like what we did on West Main Street.
Yeah.
I really think we need to be back further. And then I heard this couple say, talking about wanting to put one in, and that two hundred setback would be, would be very hard for, they couldn't, they couldn't put it in. So I'm thinking, why, why couldn't we have, uh, five, fifty to two hundred? And then let the Planning Board, uh, have some discretion with rules. You know, if, if there's a wet land and you have to get around it or, or something like that. I don't know. I'm sure you probably talked about it, but that's, that's the one thought I had.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Does anyone wanna respond to that? I, I know the gentleman from Wendell said, um, it could look like you were showing favoritism. And I don't think, our board doesn't do that. And if we had, uh, some guidelines, that wouldn't be done.
I, I personally.
That'd have to be mitigating circumstances.
Yeah, I personally feel like that should be something that maybe goes through the zoning board of appeals. And that's what the zoning board of appeals is for. We set the rules. If there's a circumstance like that, then they could go to the ZBA and get a, and get a.
But that's an extra step.
It is an extra step, but it's because of the rules.
And we didn't wanna turn them down.
But it would be zoning board, they can appeal the rules that are set for hardship because if.
But it's a, could be, it's a self-created hardship if you, if you're gonna put it up and you already own the land. So that they wouldn't pass it.
No, I, I don't think that would be a self-created hardship.
The rule changed after you owned land.
Right.
Because you've already owned the land, so the rule changed. You can apply for it. Now, if the rule is already there and then you come along, buy some property or you can put your permit in or whatever, now there's differences.
Also, there's some hope for those older people.
Yeah, I, I would.
The ZBA is where they would argue that.
There was, there was some things that, you know, when I, when I read through this, I thought it was very well done. I just said some sort of off the cuff kinda questions, like the, you had a fifteen-foot height limit. Well, it, it describes a fifteen-foot height limit, but what's that defined as? Fifteen foot from what?
From the base down.
Yes, it is from the base down. I, I think the.
Cause that's pretty high.
It is, but right now in any district, uh, we're anywhere from thirty-five to fifty feet, even in a residential district.
Okay.
So the, the fifteen feet, you come to a consensus, you look at what their normal panels are, and they're normally not fifteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
So we went to the extreme on the, the tilting panels. If you look down on West Main, they're actually tilted, move towards. At, at their height, when they're vertical.
When they're vertical.
You're, you're probably getting close to that, which is still twenty feet under what, what our code allows.
Okay.
But having that and the reason for the two hundred feet, um, having that, and they do have the variance process, even if it was a self-created hardship, does not mean it's an automatic denial on the ZBA. Um, and they can't deny something just for the specific reason of self-created hardship. Um, that is one of the factors of the four, but they would have to be more than that just to deny it. And every situation's gonna be completely different when it comes to that. Um, we, we did beat this up rather, rather quite, I, I, I don't know any other way to say it. We, we really beat this up a lot.
No, but that's fine.
I, I'd like to add that too, is like, you know, the conversations that we had, at least the ones I was involved with, um, where the public was involved, everybody's very cordial. Everybody understood that this was a process for creating law and everybody seemed to work together on it. And like you said, there were, there were members of, of the panel that, you know, this affected directly either one way or another. And it was good to have all those people come and talk together in a very civil and cordial manner to come up with what we came up with. So the input isn't just pro-solar people or.
Right.
Anti-solar people. I really, you know, I was on, I, I served a little bit on the committee and I talked with Chad from time to time. And, um, I'm, I don't know if I call myself pro-solar. I wouldn't call myself anti-solar. I, you know, I, I, I like looking at each of them individually and I, I think that this still allows us to do that.
I'd like to make a comment, but first to the height limit on solar panels. We would only keep our minds open on that, because I've seen where in Europe, they have them up high enough so they can run a tractor under them. So that's maybe down the road, but just, that was the point I wanted to make, um, relative to the height issue.
Interesting.
You all know, I, I've had, I'm putting up two solar farms. And knowing that solar is an issue and neighbors usually take issue, I attempted to make, get a variance, instead of having two twenties, have one thirty-four. And because my property is a side-by-side, I have a side limit, so I lose space between it that pushes me towards the neighbors or makes it bigger, longer. So I attempted to actually make it less intrusive on everybody and make a thirty-four. And it was fired back from the road and I bumped it right up to the pipeline. It came over the pipeline. And you think I was Mr. Evil. It was churned down, the, the crowd went crazy. Uh, they didn't seem to understand my concept. And the variance board turned me down really bad. I mean, they just, yes, no. So I, I'm sorry, but I had to bring that out. So I guess, don't get me wrong, and I really place where I'm at in my life. But it bothers me to no end to see all, almost all the, half of the whackis plant, the woods, all around the road was my farm, hundred and eighty acres. And between farm credit and my debt load, I was pretty much forced to sell. I have thirty-four acres left. And when I take the dog out for a ride, I just burn every time I go on the neighbor's property, which is not mine anymore. So I wanted to say that sometime and I will shut up about that for the future. I'm well off. But I wanted to be milking cows and, uh, the price of milk and farm credit put me on the milking cows in eighty-nine. And the street food policy United States has put out ninety percent of the farms since the sixties. Uh, there's conglomerate farms, there's big farms. If it's a little farm, it can't survive. You go to Canada, they had a quota system, which I fought. That was a big mistake on my part. But the quota system allowed that young farmer to have a fifty-cal dairy and a brand-new John Deere tractor. And I saw it time and time in Canada, again and again. So I guess if I could rewrite history, I'd just make a few changes. And particularly on, we call it the residential egg districts. That to me, our residents, the, the, I, I sold the land. But my first mistake was they wanted me to generate some equity, sell some building lots. Well, I tell ya, that's been, having residences in the middle of fields or on the edge of fields is the biggest headache I've ever dealt. And, uh, and claims we polluted, we claimed spread manure, the whole thing. And typically, I know some of the pollution was not cow manure. It was, it, cows, I don't feed cows caffeine. I better shut up. Well, I appreciate you listening to me. And, uh, I think it's important, uh, we have an agricultural input on our boards. Unfortunately, there's very few farmers left in the Town of Batavia. So, I just need to keep it in the back of your head.
Well, we're glad you're with us, Dan.
Considering we all did, I am too.
I say more word.
But Dan, it was important to you, early on when we did our solar stuff, to have a pollinator, um, portion of this. And when I, when I read through this, and I read through it several times, I only saw a definition for pollinators in farmland solar. And I, I think that it should probably change that to require, no matter what solar you have. If you're putting ground-motored solar, it should have some pollinators or something underneath it. Well, yeah, obviously, if you're, you're putting it on a building, you can't do that. But, you know, if you're doing ground-motored solar, whether it be in your backyard or whatever, there should be something underneath it that, you know, helps, um, well, pretty much everyone, because without these, we, we got problems.
It should be at least grapes.
Right, something. I, I didn't see that. I asked Brittany and she says, no, I, I don't see it. Okay, so.
It's very minimal in here. I mean, we could certainly, it's only seven C.
Well, yeah, I, you know, just, instead of making it just, just prime farmland, just make it, it's ground-motored solar. We want these kinda things there.
I'm not sure I want ground, like, if I have one in my backyard that was already grass and I'm putting a ground-motored solar, I don't want one there.
Grass is a quality, you know, that's fine, as long as something's underneath it.
I don't think grass is a pollinator species.
Well, I understand.
You understand what I'm saying? It's like, if I put one in my backyard, I'm not going out and pet it.
Yeah, yeah, but, but some type of vegetation.
Sure, understood.
You know, if it's, if it's not prime farmland, then, then, you know, that's fine, as long as it's vegetation. Cause I can see that, yeah, you know, you and I said, okay, well, let's put some solar panels in the backyard and we just, you know, fill it with gravel. To me, that's, just doesn't look right.
No, I wouldn't.
I, I, I wouldn't do that either, but you understand.
It should at least say grass. It's not necessarily a pollinator species, but you don't want ground. And I agree with that totally.
And then, and then, uh, we, while we're, and I, I saw in here about ownership change. Should there be something in here about current code when ownership's changed?
About what? I'm sorry.
Like current, current code, like, you know, if you're, if you, if you're remodeling something, sometimes you have to bring it up to code, right? So why not have that as an ownership change, these guys, so they don't just suddenly say, well, you know, here's the new owner of the field and, you know, we're gonna just go by what, what you told us before instead of what the more restrictive stuff is now. It's cause, it, we all know, things are gonna change.
If there is new ownership, that'll have to be, the special use permit does not transfer like a variance, so the, the new ownership would have to re-up the special use permit for the solar project itself.
Yeah, but it, it says in here, if the special, the special use permit is shown to remain in effect as long as they're full compliance with this art.
Correct.
So, so the, the special use, it doesn't really exist.
I have a special use, we brought it up. Yeah.
That's true. We can, we can bring it every year.
Agreed.
I think somewhere in there, it talks about if there's any modification, it has to be brought up to code.
Correct.
I forget where it talks about that.
This is a pretty big document. I get.
It's a little bit longer than we had before.
Yeah, it's a tiny bit. But no, those are some of the things that I thought was a really well-written document and just a couple of the questions I had, you know. But I think, you know, what you're doing is definitely the right, right path. And I suspect it will be a, a model for most of the communities in, in this state, and maybe even part of the state, so.
I think that's probably right, just because of the experience that we had, you know, prior to that.
Right.
Not, not, most of the communities didn't have the amount of solar, you know, farms come in that we had. And so we learned a lot. And hopefully, this document reflects that. And like I said, there's, you know, there's a little bit of give and take on the whole, the whole thing. It's, uh, you know, do, do we want solar farms covering every bit of ag land? No. But do we want farmers to be able to have that choice? Yes. And I'm hoping this document did that.
Yep, I agree.
I think it'll make it a lot easier for us, because now we have the guidelines that we wished we had, or we will have them. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add or like to talk about regarding the solar law? I don't think we have to specify any recommendations, because we have enough members here that are gonna go back to the board and work on them. So that, that's my opinion, unless someone has a specific, uh, recommendation they wanna send back. Now, Steve, I see you're here. What would you like to talk to us about?
Who, me? I just wanted to hear everybody's input on the solar law. The, uh, you know, the committee did an excellent job, and I'm doing a, you know, kind of an independent review. And Dan's got those comments, but it's, it really included all of the circumstances and ambiguities and everything that we've kind of seen over the last, you know, five years. So, uh, kudos to the committee.
So do you have any questions for, for us? Do you have any questions for us that you'd like to?
Nope, just wanted to see all the new members and welcome them. And if there's, you know, any of the Planning Board members have any questions or anything of the staff, uh, you know, during your reviews, just call us anytime.
Thank you. Dan, how about you?
I have no new news. Um, are we to my report or are we still on solar?
No, we're still on solar. We're getting ready to wrap it up.
I, I have, uh, I have nothing more to add. We just need to work out finer details to move the process along. And I, I, like I said, I can stay with what I said earlier, and what Steve just said, the board itself, it was great working with everybody on the board, so.
Okay, now, we're, we're on number three, zoning enforcement officer report.
I'm gonna get that camera swinging today. I, uh, I don't have anything new that has gone to the county as of yet. Um, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of phone calls being fielded right now, um, a lot of talk. The projects that we've been working on, we've been working with RRH, um, Dave Fickerella, I see, that's, we're, we're still working with them and sending things back and forth.
I saw he has a new name for his project.
He does.
Crimson something.
I don't recall it off the top of my head. Um, but other than that, right now, we're finishing up end-of-year reports for New York State. Uh, we're going through and doing our census reports, field inspections. Um, our permit numbers were very high again this year. I did a report for Teresa and the volume of assessed value is also very high this year for commercial, industrial, and residential. Um, nothing really slowed down, uh, didn't even slow down through COVID. If anything, people were home more. Uh, so we got a lot of pool barns, swimming pools, decks, and additions that we did. Um, we're, we're still moving along with building stuff day by day by day, so it's going good. Uh, it's busier than ever. I have nothing new that went to the county. If something should come in, I will get it to you right away.
Nothing's going to the county this month?
Nothing I have as of today, no. Nothing I have as of today, no.
I hate not to have meetings, but I'm wondering if Dave Figarella or is Alan doing anything with his mobile home project?
I have not heard anything from him recently. We sent out our letters, our comment letters, probably a few months ago to everybody we've been dealing with.
I think you scared them, that was a long letter.
Well, it was a lot of information we need yet. So we're kind of at a standstill with all of our bigger projects till we get feedback from them.
Does anyone have any questions on any projects? Well, as soon as I get information, you'll get it. Now, for chairman's report, I forgot to say we also have a change in the board. Two of our alternate members are now regular members. Brooks Holly and Steve Tanner are now regular members, and the two new members are the alternates. And I forgot to say that, congratulations.
Thanks to the town board for thinking that I could still do this, so that's good. I was trying to, I was trying to get myself kicked off by having sidebar conversations, but that's been worn out. So now you have to put up with me till 2025 at least. So thank you, town board.
Yeah, thanks a lot, sir.
It's all your fault.
Sharon, do you have anything from the town board?
No, I don't. I just wanted to say something about the solar committee. I just feel they've done an excellent job, and I want to congratulate them. It was a lot of hard work, I'm sure, but it came out very well.
I think everybody's in agreement on that. That was a hard project, I think, and everyone feels good about it. Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Okay, we normally have our alternate, which would be Brittany this time, make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Tanner, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Good meeting, thank you for coming out. It was short, but I hope, I hope you feel it was productive.